I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to ask Secretary to perform roll call tenants, please.
Supremo?
Here.
Mr. Perotikos absent. Mr. Boss?
Here.
Mr. Tress?
Here.
Mr. Florioso?
Here.
Mr. Meehan?
Here.
Mr. Flaw?
Here. Okay. All the board members should have gotten the minutes from the March 18th meeting. If there's no discussion, entertain a motion to accept the...
I'll move that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I guess I should abstain. I wasn't here, so.
Yeah.
You watched the...
Either way.
How you received them?
Huh?
You said you watched the meeting.
I did watch it, yes.
All right. So either way, that's fine. You still have the four... You still have the four eyes anyway, but... Okay. So it's been approved. All right. So our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for a Subin LLC subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So motion carries. All right. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design, engineer for the applicant. I'm joined here with the applicant tonight. And do you want me to give just a little description of the proposed action for the public? Turn it the other way?
Yeah. So the camera... The camera up there, it'll pick it up.
So just to update you on where we are, and you did discuss this during the workshop. We did address the planners and the engineers' comments. What's left now is to provide any correspondence we might receive from the DEC or the Army Corps. We need to get our Health Department approval, which we did do preliminary soil tests. We haven't done soil tests with the Health Department yet, but we will be out there doing that with them. And just to update on the correspondence to those agencies. I've made phone calls a few weeks ago. Didn't get returning calls yet, so today I emailed them with the materials that would be relevant for them to review. So I'll forward those emails that I sent to the board. And if I get any responses between now and the next time we're here, we'll certainly provide those.
Okay.
And just regarding SHIPO, we did fill out a ticket with the CRIS system, so we're hoping that we get some kind of response from them soon.
Okay. All right. Any board members have any questions regarding this before we move to the public?
None.
No?
No.
Seeing none. Well, let me see if there's anybody here from the public has any comments, and we'll go from there. So if you'd like to speak, come on up to the podium, please, and state your name and an address for the record.
My name is Heidi Soi. I am the property owner...
Speak into the microphone.
I am the property owner of a tent with Woodmore that is across that property. I lived there for 23 years. And I never saw that land dry. That is always wet and it's in a ditch. Okay? I see that is always wet. My question is, where is going to be the driveway to respect to my driveway?
Where... Oh, you gotta stand by the microphone so we can hear.
Where is the location of those driveways with respect to my driveway?
Okay.
And the other question is, they are going to need to put soil in order for these houses to get built. These are going to need... They are going to need to put soil because it's in a ditch. When they put the soil here, my house is... My property is below. The water is going to run through my property across the road. And the other thing is, they say that they are putting a pipe that was going to go to the wetland. Who is going to maintain this pipe? The other question is, behind my house, in the corner of my house, there is, I believe it's a wetland. When I bought the house, that land was completely dry. With all this rain and we have a pond, the water is coming into my property. We have ducks in the back. I'm very concerned that with all the rain that we have, that wetland is going to affect the people who live around that wetland. Because that happened to me. And the other problem that you have here is that it's a curve. This curve is a very dangerous curve. People, two years ago, they crashed against the electric pole that is in front of my driveway. I was 24 hours without electricity. And the other point that is very dangerous, that is Widmer and New Hackens. Because in order, if you're coming from Widmer to go to Route 9, you need to be in the far right to be able to make a left turn because you don't see what is going on. And the people who are coming from New Hackens or to take Widmer, they need to do a very tight turn. See, this is a problem for accidents and the other is the curve. And I want to know, where is going to be these driveways with respect to my driveway? Because I'm not going to be able to see. Okay? You have anything to say?
So where in your house again is right next door to this property?
It's across. My house is across.
You're on the other side of the street.
I am the other side of Widmer. And my land is below.
Right.
See, all the water is coming to my land. Well, this is what I'm concerned. And my house is going to be...
Okay.
And I told you, and that is, you can go and see the land. The land is wet. It's now, it's a lake. It's a lake. And they're going to need to tear down trees. And when they tear down trees, the trees absorb the water. See, there's more going to be more water there. That is my phone.
You can just put it down there.
Yeah?
Yeah.
This is concerning. And the other, remember that we have ways...
Yes. Talk into the microphone.
We have ways. We don't have water. Our water... We don't have city water. We have wells and sewer. And I don't know where they are going to put their wells and their sewer system. Because what happened to me, that was two years ago, when there was a big storm, the septic tank was full with the water that was not accessed by the soil. And they need to pump it twice in one week. Because there was not a dirty tank. It was the water coming from the soil to the septic, that is a new septic tank. It's got to be seven years old. And how you are going to figure that problem?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Come on up to the podium. Name and address for the record.
Yeah. I'm Gary Duncan. I live at 12 Widmer. I'm her next door neighbor.
Okay.
I'm here because I wasn't sure she was going to be here. But what she's saying, that her yard floods into the front yard all the time. And it's worse through the 20 years that I've been at my house. So it's more often and it stays there longer. One of the public statements in the thing, it said that the water in the wetland buffer zone drains rapidly after a storm. Like she said, it's never dry. Maybe the driest summer it might dry it up. I went and took pictures, five or six days after a storm, there's still flowing water.
Okay. And that's just that area down by the road you're talking about? By the Hackensack Road?
It's directly across Widmer Road. Across from 12 and 10 Widmer.
Yep. So close to...
There's a large area, but it's never dry there.
Okay.
You know, I'm not against the houses being there. And my house would probably be quieter because it's going to have to get rid of a stone wall basically across from me. So that reflects the sound, but...
Yep. Okay. All right. Well, we'll have the applicant, let's say, address some of the issues there with the water.
Yep. The one thing said it rapidly drains after a storm. They said I went five or six days, the water is still flowing through the area. Okay?
Yep.
That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? All right. So seeing none.
Okay. So I did hear some comments regarding drainage through the site. As I mentioned in earlier meetings, there is a catch basin along the town road that discharges drainage into the site. That's where a lot of this drainage that they're talking about comes from. In the middle, the site is very flat from here to here. So the drainage course from that culvert flows through this belly here in the site. And you do get some ponding water there. So as part of our proposed mitigation for that, is we're grading in a swale that will convey that water much more efficiently to the wetland. We're also providing grading on the lots that won't allow that water to pond up in that area anymore. We also did a drainage study that demonstrates that this project isn't going to impact the wetland. It doesn't negatively impact drainage going off the site. I don't know exactly where the driveways are across the street from this, but I'll look into that. We chose the location for the driveways to optimize site distance with onsite mitigation. If there's a way that we could mitigate that, we certainly will, and we'll look into that.
Okay.
Can you remind us when the wetlands in the back were flagged for...
They were flagged right after the time the survey was done, which was... Sometime in October, late October, '23?
'23?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a... The drainage on Widmer that goes onto the property that you said ponds up? Is that underneath the road? Is from there something?
Yeah. There's a catch basin here on Widmer.
Yeah.
Culver underneath the road. And it just discharges onto the site, and it just really doesn't move freely through there.
Yeah.
So the proposed grading on the site will actually help that get through the site without having a pond there all the time. Because it's just, if, you know, again, existing conditions...
Sir, do you know the catch basin he's talking about?
No.
I'll look when I go home.
I don't know exactly what number it's in front of, but it's the first drive on the right as you come on to Widmer.
You gotta be able to speak. Come up to the microphone. Yeah. I'm just wondering, and I'm not a professional. We talked about this in one of the previous meetings, that you said that the other catch... On the other side, that that was... They had a buildup of like stuff that might have prevented that from draining properly, right? On the wetland side. So if it is the same scenario on this area, maybe doing something on both sides to make the water flow better so it drains off their side faster, that kind of solves both problems. I don't know. If that's possible?
Yeah. I honestly don't, you know, I don't know if there's an issue with this catch basin, and maybe it's silted up.
I know it's not your problem.
Right. I think that could be part of the reason, if they're talking about drainage ponding up on the other side of Widmer. We did mention early in the process that this culvert does have debris in front of it that drains the wetland. So when, you know, if and when we get approval, we'll be able to go in there and clean that as a general maintenance for a culvert. It's not a permitted action, as long as you're just cleaning a culvert. And it's just, it's basically debris that's dammed up in front of that culvert. So once that's cleared out of there, I think that's going to make that wetland drain much better.
Increase the flow across the road.
But, you know, this thing might need cleaning. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I did notice silt in it, but I didn't think that the pipe was...
Yeah. Is there more than one catch basin that's connected to that?
No.
So it's just that one individual with a pipe across the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, some of these storms that we've been getting lately, there's been a lot of groundwater movement too. So there could be infiltration into that catch basin that's going across as well. So I've been seeing drainage runoff for days after some of these storms we've been getting on other sites.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions? So at this point, it looks like we really were just backed down to the issues of getting some responses. And again, did we... The 30-day window for lead agency, did that...
Did we pass that? Do you know what day that was sent out, that lead agency's letter? Subin.
Subin, yeah.
March 12.
It was March 12. Yeah. So we have a few more. We've still got another week.
Week and a half.
And a half, yeah. So we're kind of really kind of not in a position to do anything at this point until we hear back. So I mean, at this point, I mean, probably our best bet is to adjourn, I guess, to a date. And that's going to be, uh...
Probably the 15th, not...
I don't know. The 15th? I don't know. 15th be too soon? I don't know. I mean, really, you don't have too much more to put together.
Other than Health Department, you know, Health Department's been to take a month or two.
Right. Right. Health Department, yeah. But, I mean, Health Department, I mean, that has nothing to do with us either. Yeah. I mean, if they're going to go with what you're proposing, then that's going to be it. I mean, if there's a total rework or something, I mean, then it would have to come back. You know, it would have to come back in front of us. But, you know, if you were to... If you were to have to move the structure and everything else to make it... So, I mean, the 15... I mean, we could put it on for the 15. Adjourn it to then, and then we'll see where we are at that point, if that's okay with you.
Yeah. That's fine. And if we don't have anything, I can just let you know, and we could just push it to the next available meeting.
So at this point, yeah. So, I mean, you know, we know everything that really has to get addressed here. I think we're pretty well...
Yeah.
Get everything out in the open. So let's adjourn the public hearing then to April the 15th. So you want to make that motion?
Sure. Make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Seeing none. Motion carries. All right.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll see you on the 15th.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Our next item on the agenda is public hearing for site plan and special use permit for Heinemann Caretaker's Cottage. Site plan and special use permit. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Okay. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi. Good evening, members of the Board. Sarah Ryan, Vandewater and Vandewater, on behalf of Ms. Heinemann. So when we left you last month, we were under instruction to show a hypothetical subdivision of the plot. All setbacks. That is what we've depicted here. As you can see, Lot A, which would contain the Caretaker's Cottage, would be a little under seven acres. And Lot B, with the main jobs and all other improvements, would be a little over 14.
Okay.
I was also asked to contact the Department of Emergency Response to obtain a new response address for the Caretaker's Cottage. That application has been submitted from my discussion with that department. It will likely have a Dogwood Hill Road address. So they know to come in the back.
Okay. So they would require you to get a different address for the back one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we were talking earlier... The... So we have three lots there.
Uh, yes. There is a lot that is in common ownership, but not...
Yeah. Are you aware of an easement for that lot for the driveway that connects to 376?
I would have to check. However, I know through the Duchess County, the photos, the aerial historical photos, that entrance has existed since a little before 2004.
Okay. All right. Okay. Same way of any questions? I guess for the applicant right now? Before we give it over to the staff to kind of go through? All right.
Sorry. Let me just, as well, we were asked to show where the disturbance would be for the addition. Essentially, right now, the structure is a rectangle. These two end pieces are going to be added to bring it up to the square footage required by the code.
Okay. So, all right.
And that is already disturbed area by the driveway.
All right. This is going to be one, right? This is one dwelling unit at the end of that?
Correct. A two-bedroom, one-dwelling unit.
Yep. Okay. All right. Jim Malcolm? Yeah, Ben? Want to go just kind of through?
Yeah. So I have a few questions. The last time you were here, we talked about the hypothetical subdivision. On that plan, I noticed the side lot line on Lot B... The side lot line setback on Lot B goes through the garage. You should have room to adjust that lot line such that the garage is compliant with the setback. But as it is shown, it would not be compliant. That's not the subdivision plan?
It does for, like I was saying. So the garage is over here? Okay.
You see that dotted line that goes through it? So the setback requirements for any structure under 144 square feet are less than. My understanding is that garage would be over 144 square feet, and will need to comply with the setback requirement.
Okay.
So in your revisions, either adjust the hypothetical subdivision lot line or demonstrate that that building is fewer than 144 square feet. My, I guess, as the chairman mentioned, we're curious to either see the existing or see a proposed cross-access easement for the driveway off of 376.
Okay.
And if it's available, if it's as recent as 2004, and you have a building permit for that, there's a section of the code 24020C, which essentially says that, you know, one lot has one driveway. And so whenever this second driveway was added, it's my understanding that the 376 was the second driveway to be added.
Yes.
And whenever it was added, I'd be curious to see the building permit for it to bring it into compliance. There is a section 24095 on existing structures and uses. I don't believe that it would apply here. It applies generally, in my experience, it applies to existing off-street parking lots or commercial lots. But when Barbara gets back, I'd be very curious to discuss this with her about whether or not 95 applies here. If it doesn't, and you have two driveways, you may need to get a variance to have one lot that has two driveways.
Okay. I mean, it was my understanding that the two... The prohibition against two curb cuts occurred in 2020. Both of these driveways have existed long before then.
Yeah. Let me see. I think 24020 was last updated in 2003, 2005... Oh, nope. You're right. The one driveway on one lot is dated 2020. And this would clearly be pre-existing.
Right.
Okay. Never mind. I think that satisfies it for me. The cross-access easement and the lot line is all I have.
Okay.
And do we have a location for the well on the main house?
Yeah.
Should be on these lines. I will have to confirm. They should have been included on the plans. If they're not, we'll make that amendment.
But there's two wells for the cottage and the main house.
Two separate wells, you mean? For the two structures?
Are you aware if there's two separate wells?
I believe so. The main house was built after. There was a structure where the cottage is. The engineer has been in contact with the building, with the Health Department as well. They are currently processing the application. They expect to receive the comments sometime this week. And to finish that up, it's about 0.25 acres that are going to be disturbed by putting in the new septic. So we will be applying when it comes time to build that for a grading permit.
All right.
In between the next time... Now and the next time you come back, if there is any documentation about when the second driveway was put in, 376?
Okay.
If you're able to find anything on that, building permit resolution?
I would assume there would have to be something in the county as well, since it's off of a county road?
Yeah. Or something that comes from the change with 911, or, I mean, any documentation on that would be useful.
Right. There is a... I can bring photographs from 2004 showing the existence of the driveway.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'm here.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, really, the Dogwood driveway, I mean, that seems to be the... There's been a lot of discussion regarding that prior to the meeting.
I can actually... I can prepare with photographs.
Yeah. There were also questions about whether it's gated.
Not at this time, but the property owner did receive variances to certainly activate both parcels last year for the fence.
Okay.
This is from 1980.
Oh, you mean the corner lot?
Yes.
Yeah. There was also a report of the frontage on... Is it Dog... Dogner?
Dogwood.
Dogwood?
The gold is that?
The frontage off of Dogwood being used for garbage collection. There's a dumpster there. Is that associated with the construction? Is that...
Uh, no. That's always been there, according to the property owner. She's always used that. There's no prohibition in the code for where the dumpsters need to be placed. They can be on a private property.
Yeah.
There are certain requirements. They have to meet, you know, signage on it. Their name has to be clearly indicated. There... I didn't find any prohibition in the code about where it needs to be picked up from.
Yeah. I was just not familiar with dumpsters on...
Right.
Private property.
Yeah. Well, that's the question that we were getting to.
Yeah. The garbage collection was changed in front of the town board two years ago, I think. And they brought it up to garbage cans of 95 gallons or something like that. But I've never heard of dumpsters.
Yeah. There is a dumpster provision.
So Section 21014 and Section 21012, it is 96 gallons. And 21014 calls out that the... So, Section 21014 and Section 21012, it is 96 gallons, and 2, 21014 calls out that the garbage must be removed. The garbage containers must be removed. I think the dumpster referring to is, um, 21014, but that was amended. So at this time, a dumpster cannot be used, they must remove their cans as soon as the garbage has been picked up and bring them inside.
Or I guess within 24 hours of collection. Yeah, I do remember that.
Yeah, so on person, on, um, residential, uh, dumpsters is typically not the source of
Sorry, can I get those code sections, I can?
Sure, Debbie, do you need this or can I?
No, you can.
Here.
Let me just, 210, yeah, 21014.
21014C.
And 21012, this is something different.
It would be in the amendments, though, it would not be in the
Correct, so are those not posted to E codes yet?
Uh, they should be, let me pull them up. 21014.
You can have these, I just only tried to look copy.
I'm not finding the amendments on E code.
It may not be there yet.
Yeah, 'cause, um, 21014D currently states large receptacles. No person shall maintain or cause to be maintained on any premises, a receptacle of one and a half cubic yards or larger unless it meets the following requirements. The owner's name has to be displayed. It can't be rusted. There has to be reflectors.
Water type.
And the area has to be kept clean.
Okay.
So you're saying that you, you're, you currently meet all those requirements?
I would have to look into it, but I know you can have a dumpster under certain conditions.
Is that, Malcolm, is that still in?
My impression, uh, my understanding was that this section of the code had been amended, but that E code is not reflecting the amendments that were adopted.
It was adopted in 2022, in April.
Yeah.
And, um, basically, the 21014 is what you're referring to with the dumpster was amended and, um, no such receptacle shall be kept near any public place longer than it is necessary for the removal of the contents thereof. All receptacles used for the reception of garbage or refuse mail shall be prohibited, uh, provided with proper covers and kept secure, so at this point, um, I understand what you're saying, but basically, it's being kept there longer than for the removal of the refuse.
I was unaware of the code change, so I'll look into that.
But I'll leave these here for you.
Yeah, so that's the, I mean, it's kind of, it's, listen, I, I understand having a, a large dumpster in a, in a residential neighborhood. It's kind of a, I mean, I, I said, I, I can't see somebody generating that much garbage on a regular basis. Number one, that you need that unless you're, you know, running some type of business out of your home.
Or doing construction, right?
Right, construction's the other end of it, but even that, it shouldn't be, you know, construction debris really shouldn't be put in regular garbage either, so it should be put in, you know, should be getting a regular dumpster for that, you know, for construction and demolition debris.
I actually spoke to the caretakers out there today, they were filling it up and they were overfilling it and I informed them that they must condense it so that the lids were closed, so you might be hearing about that as well.
Okay.
The, the dumpster thing's really, I mean, that's just a small piece of, like, that's not really what
It's not, yeah, but it's still, yeah, but it's still, it's kind of like the reason why we're still using the back entrance.
I see, so they're justifying it being their main entrance.
Yeah.
But the dumpsters, what they're saying is that their main entrance is where the dumpster is.
Right, right.
But, and I would argue that it's probably safer for the garbage truck to pick up trash at the end of a cul-de-sac than stopping on Route 376.
Yeah.
In front of a gated house.
Yeah, I mean, they could put it out in the front of their house, too, you know, they had the regular containers like everybody else has, and a truck comes by, it automatically picks it up, nobody, nobody gets out of the truck, you know, they do it that way, too.
As, as far as I've seen in the code, there's no requirement that it's at the main entrance of the property.
No, there's no requirement.
Because I believe they've been picking up the garbage there since she owned the property, which was in the early, or late 90s.
Not, yeah. Yeah, but the back entrance has become just a necessity for the, more or less for the dumpsters.
So would it be, would it be hard to just replace the dumpster with a bunch of garbage cans?
Likely not, I would just have to discuss that with the property owner.
Okay, it'd be problem solver, do them.
Again, they could not, they would have to be removed behind the fence at some point after the, within 24 hours.
Understood.
I would hope with some caretakers, they have the ability to get that done, so.
They will hopefully have cottage there, so.
Yeah, I mean, what's everybody's idea, what's everybody's feeling here with this, with the second driveway?
I have a back. I'd want to reserve until we find out what's going on with that easement.
Okay.
Aren't accessory structures normally for family members?
Uh, there is a provision in the code for, um, accessory structures, this, uh, they're not applying for a special permit for accessory structure. It's a separate, uh, special permit for caretaker's residence, um, which has separate provisions.
They're proposing the conversion and legalization of an existing accessory structure?
Yes, so accessory structures, I think, um, there are two separate special permits for them, and this would be applying under, uh, caretaker's residence. The other one does need to be inhabited by a family member. I'm struggling to remember the name of it, but it's, commonly, we would refer to it as, as a, a mother-in-law apartment.
So we don't require a subdivision at this point, I mean, it's
No.
It's basically two residences with two water supplies, two septics, two driveways, it just seems like two separate homes.
I guess technically, we don't, we would not require there to be two driveways and we would not permit, uh, the construction of a second driveway if it was not pre-existing.
Is there a definition for the caretaker's cottage?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a business relationship for the primary house, or how is that defined?
So it was a legal, ill, illegal accessory apartment, it would not have been allowed that way. So this is supposed to be a caretaker's cottage and specifically for the person that is caretaking to the mansion. Not to be rented out, not to be, there's quite a number of limits on that.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's technically called guest or caretaker's residence, and it can house the, the caretaker of the property, uh, and, and the house, or, um, a guest, but it is not a separate accessory apartment to be rented out.
And I believe we were calling it out as a caretaker's cottage specifically, um, for that purpose, as of a caretaker.
Well, it's the same definition, so it would be up to the property owner who she houses there, whether they be a guest or a caretaker.
Not to be rented, clearly.
So, I mean, so it is, uh, I mean, they, so the two have to be tied together regardless.
Because if you do the subdivide, then you're in a whole different ballgame.
Right, if you subdivide, it just becomes a regular, you know, single-family house on its own parcel.
But Bruce, I agree with you, as a residential neighborhood, have a dumpster sitting out there in perpetuity really undermines, I think, the character and the quality of that neighborhood, so
Right.
you could find, get some more information on that.
Certainly.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's, um, yeah, because again, the need for it just doesn't seem to be there, but, um, all right. Uh, this is a public hearing, so I do have to ask the public, is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? All right, let's say there's no one here for this application, so. At this point, I mean, what are we looking at, is it really?
Very, very minor changes in my regard, we want to see the, um, any documentation they have on the second driveway. We want to see the cross-access easement. I can't remember, was the, uh, location of the big house, uh, Lobby, uh, well identified, is that on the plans?
So, you know, a lot of the question, the only improvements that they're proposing really are all Health Department related.
Correct.
So, my suggestion would be that you, before you decide to move anywhere with this project, you at least get a submittal from the applicant of their initial round of comments from the Health Department, so you see what their concerns are, they look like they're pretty standard concerns. You know, fix the grading here, do this, you know, or they say, there is no well, you need to drill a well, then
Right, then we have to drill, yeah, so, you're saying we should probably hold off on
I would wait till at least, like, a, a septual, a septual approval from the Health
Yeah, for the
Conditions, you know.
So then a question comes in, is how do we handle the public hearing? So we're going to adjourn this to a date certain, that's going to be the, you know, without getting, unless, there's two ways of doing this, I guess, is, in the past, we've done this, this is, again, it's always been brought to me about the 62-day approval. You know, if we close it now, we don't take any action within 62 days. The other option is if we get the applicant to agree to, you know, not proceed at default approval because we don't take any action based upon, we're still waiting for information, you know, to authorize a final resolution.
I could be wrong, but I was under the impression that the shot clock was for subdivisions.
No, 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 but I thought that we used it for everything that we were doing with these, with all the, with all the, um, public hearings. This is what we've done in the past.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't just, it wasn't just for, um, subdivisions.
Okay.
Because, yes, that is, it's very, those are specific, and I think that's with the state, but I believe in the town code, it's, it applies to everything.
For all, all right.
Yeah.
So you're saying leave the public hearing open just so you don't start a clock?
Just so we don't start a clock running, that's my
I mean, my, my understanding is we're wrapping up in the Health Department, so that shouldn't be an issue to provide you with the comments that have already been provided.
Yeah.
That's what you're looking for, um, I know they're anticipating getting a second comment letter to wrap up the minor issues, uh, this week, so.
Do you get, you already have a comment letter from the Health Department?
I believe so, uh, the engineer, uh, Mr. Stokozo was in contact with Dan Keeler. And he said he anticipates a comment letter today, so. If he doesn't already have it, we should be getting it this week.
So. What's the date, well?
We have a May 6th and a May 20th.
May 6th and the 20th. So, I don't know, do you think that by the, well, we, I mean, we could push it out to the 6th and then just see where we stand at that point, and we still have some other things that have to get corrected anyway.
I mean, as far as
The general stuff we just talked about earlier, but I guess the, we still have to assess the garage issue with the lot line, correct? So.
I think that that should be relatively simple.
Simple, yeah, that's just a move, you know, it's either
Need to move that lot line, and I think that they have ample room to do so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that smaller garage may actually be under the square footage as well, so there's a larger garage on the site.
Double check, I mean, 144 is pretty small, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's more of a shed than a garage, it's called a garage, but it looks like a shed.
Then it may be.
It might be.
Then it might be small enough, in which case, I believe your setback requirements go down to 10 feet, which you would comply with, but whichever way you choose to go, I mean, I think, I think in either direction, it's a simple fix.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the easement and providing the additional documentation requested, I mean, wouldn't mind that being a condition of the approvals.
Yeah, so, well, maybe, maybe it's either we just push it out to May the 6th and we'll see where we stand at that point, and we can kind of go from there. All right, anybody, somebody wants to make a motion to, to adjourn the public hearing?
To adjourn it to May 6th.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Actually do have a rendering of that drive. This is that garage shed.
14 by 19, so it will need to meet setback requirements.
Yeah, so it does have to get moved. Okay. The, that's here, oh. Yeah, that would be the biggest, yeah. Okay, thank you. What? Yeah, we run a little late, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, tell them that.
Like, 15, 8:30?
Yeah, 15, 8:30.
Yeah.
8:30?
Yeah, 8, 8:15 will be there. Yeah, yeah, because hopefully this, hopefully our next item won't be as lengthy. The next item on the agenda is discussion, uh, we're getting to Bersky's, uh, Huntley Carpenter Lot Line Realignment, and this is to vote on a resolution of approval.
Oh, yeah, good evening, Nicholas Tybbersy, 109 Caroline Drive East, and I'm here for you guys to vote on the lot line reassignment.
So you did, you did get a, a resolution from the planner?
I did, and then, uh, Robert got the couple of things that I, I saw as well, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think those are technical issues that we can get taken care of on our end. But I think the majority of the, um, I think the balance of the, uh, the balance of the resolution should be okay.
The other issue I saw, I don't know, it says in like one of the first paragraphs, received an application from Kim Ashcraft, I don't know who that really is.
Change that.
Thanks.
I also spoke with Barbara regarding language on, um, it's Condition 4D. I wanted to speak to Kyle about it, but he was away last week. So Kyle, if you're, uh, okay with the language on 4D, and if you want to modify it at all, let me know.
How many deeds we're talking about, only the one, right?
Yeah, there's that one.
Yeah, I, I, um, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Well, maybe, maybe, you know what? Maybe we want to answer some lawyers that, uh, get submitted to, to, uh, to the town here, and then, and then this way, uh, we want to make sure it gets filed as well.
So, sorry, repeat that?
So for the deed, so what we want to do for the deed is we want to, uh, make sure that it's, the day we're responsible for recording. So they'll, uh, so we get proof that they have it recorded, and then it gets returned to my office. So, uh, so this way we have a record in fact, that's for taking care of.
Okay.
So, just, just, so maybe just add, if you want to add that to the
Conditions?
Yeah.
What's about that, um, Schedule A, we normally, Schedule A?
Yeah.
Yeah, we normally have that filed with the, with the deed and the my law. De description, I'm not sure if it's in there.
So D reads, uh, the applicant shall submit the proposed deeds and the new deed Schedule A description with TP 584 and RP 5217, including legal description of the final my, uh, final my law. So, D reads, the applicant shall submit the proposed deeds and the new deed Schedule A description with TP 584 and RP 5217, including legal description of the final Mylar. And you're saying that you want that
Same, same shall, yeah, same shall be recorded with Dutch County Clerk with a return to planning board attorney. And can have it, and have it copied. I actually just leave it like that.
With the same, return to the Woffenshmaw Town Attorney.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I guess my question is like all on that four, like A, B, C, D, and E and G?
Yep.
Like, going through them in the application process itself, I have included some of those already. Do I have to resubmit them? How does that go with you guys?
A couple of lines. What I'm, yeah, what I'm going to need you to do is provide us with paid receipts, taxes, you know, of course, we have 15 and everything. And I have to send it to the three consultants, but I'm to sign off.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because like the B, the applicant shall prepare a final subdivision, isn't that the, the survey that I provided the last time I was here? Do I just have to resubmit everything? That's what I guess. Like, just some of those, like the deeds were part of the process and application?
Basically, it's the, your surveyor's going to give you the, well, the subdivision plot.
He did provide the, the three deeds.
Yeah.
I do have all three deeds.
You have all, you have all that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, some of this stuff, that's why I'm just asking, like, is it just being like a, a general, hey, we need this, not saying that I didn't provide it already?
Yeah.
Or do I just put like a packet together again, which is fine?
Yeah.
Just so everything's together?
That's what it is.
Because like, you know, the old deeds or the deeds right now are, you know, the old, you know, the ones that are here right, right now.
Yeah, the old deeds are filed, but the new, the new ones are going to be the more important ones.
Okay. Just because I think it does say to submit the, the normal deeds. Yeah, I think E, the current deeds.
Yeah.
Which I already did, but like that's, do I do that again?
I haven't already.
Okay. Okay, and then what's like the G, like, the outside, what's outside agencies approvals? What does, what's that can like consist of?
For this application?
Yeah.
Probably nothing.
I just wasn't sure. Going through, I just wasn't sure what that really meant.
Yeah, I don't think that you have outstanding
Okay.
I don't think that you have outstanding approvals that you need to get. That's a, a standard
Okay, that's what I
condition in case there are.
Okay.
You'll need to get a permission to file on your map from the Health Department.
And how do I do that?
Who's your, who's your surveyor or engineer that did this for you?
It's a guy in Beacon that someone recommended.
Okay. So, the plan is ultimately going to have to go up there with a request for them to give you a permission to file. When you go to the clerk's office to file the map, they're going to look at, the Health Department looked at it.
Okay.
To make sure that if you did need an approval from them, you have it. And if you didn't need one, the Health Department said, okay, we looked at this, it doesn't need our approval. And they actually signed that, just a permission to file.
Okay.
So, they're going to look for that so you can file that with them. Yeah, this last package is really just everything together, so.
Okay.
What you guys talked through all through the process, they go to the place, I guess, yeah, this is the package, this is for done. That's kind of the thought.
And then to backtrack to the, the permission to file, now how do, how do I do that? Or does it, the surveyor does it or?
Your surveyor should, should handle it, professionals should handle that. If, if, if they don't know what they're doing, call the Health Department and tell them what you just did with the help with the, the planning board, that you just did a lot on the last, file the map.
Okay.
They'll tell you, I think they're going to tell you that you need to bring them two or three copies.
Okay.
They'll keep one for themselves to start file and then they'll sign one or two to give you.
Okay. All righty, thanks.
Okay. All right, so there you
Questions, calls.
Yeah.
Probably will, so.
All right, so with that, basically, all your answers, all your questions have been answered?
It seems like, yeah, just I'll put like a packet together and I guess bring it to or call you, oh, yeah.
All right.
Okay, okay.
All right, so obviously, I mean, the, the resolution we have in front of us has to be amended before we can sign it, so with that, I'll entertain a motion, or somebody wants to entertain a motion to, or make a motion, sorry, to make a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second you.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, you're all set?
All right, thank you.
I said, reach out to, questions, reach out to B. She'll get you in touch with the right people to get you the answers.
All right, thanks.
Okay. All right, have a good night. All right, so with that, or to the end of the agenda, if there's nothing else to discuss, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Richard, Richard made the motion. All right.